Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And good evening to those who are listening to us through by we have social media. Happy to see all of you. Before we begin, let us bow here in a word of prayer. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for all our friends and citizens that have gathered here tonight. And continue to bless and bless the city council and help us make the right decisions as we lead the city. And we thank you for all things in your name we pray. Amen. First of all, we want to, I just want to thank the School of Health Professionals for being here to, uh, uh, tonight. We so happy to have all of you here in our city council. And this is from the entire council. Item number one, consideration of October twenty first, two thousand twenty five city council minutes.
Mayor and council, I move for the adoption of the minutes.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second motion.
Second by Count Dr. Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have the motion is carried. Our second, our next item is recognition of November community of character trait. And the trait for this month is empathy. Empathy is the ability to understand and share the feelings of another. So we're going to ask all our citizens in, 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 in the city of Orangeburg to try to, uh, display this character trait for this month. Tonight, we have a, we have an appearance from the Orangeburg High School for Health Professions, Future Business Leaders of America. I want them to come forth and, and present to the council. While y'all come, we want to appreciate your teach, are y'all the teachers?
Yes, sir.
We thank y'all tonight for being with us.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to come in with your class? When you come, state your name and so we can know who you are.
All right. Good evening, council. Mayor Butler, I am Cassidy Cleckley, and I attend the Orangeburg High School Health Professions as a sophomore. I am the last year's winner of Introduction to Public Speaking on the state level, and I am representing the Future Business Leaders of America. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and city council. My name is Madison Simpson, and I'm honored to represent Future Business Leaders of America, Orangeburg High School for Health Professions Chapter, where I serve as parliamentarian. FBLA is a national organization dedicated to preparing students for success in business, leadership, and service. Through conferences, competitions, and professional development, we gain valuable skills in communication, critical thinking, and teamwork, qualities that will help us grow into effective and responsible leaders. I joined FBLA because I wanted to challenge myself and build skills that would prepare me for my future in healthcare administration. This organization has given me confidence, professionalism, and a deeper understanding of what it means to lead with integrity and purpose in all that I do. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening and for your continued support in programs like FBLA that inspires students like me to become the next generation of business and community leaders.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Madison Dunham, and I am a junior attending Orangeburg High School for Health Professions. I am a second-year member of FBLA, and I currently serve as vice president for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Joining FBLA has honestly been one of the best decisions I have ever made. When I first joined, I thought it'd just be another club to put in my college applications, but it's become so much more than that. FBLA has helped me discover who I am and who I want to be. Through competitions, leadership roles, and meeting other motivated students, I've learned how to step out of my comfort zone and believe in myself. What's so special about FBLA is that it connects you with people who share your drive and passion. You meet mentors who inspire you, friends who push you to do your best, and opportunities that make you realize how capable you truly are. FBLA isn't just preparing me for the future, it's shaping it. It's giving me the courage to chase big dreams, the skills to turn them into reality, and the confidence to walk into any interview or classroom knowing that I belong there. FBLA has taught me leadership isn't just about titles, it's about growth. And that's something I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Morgan Hayes. I am our social media ambassador. Competing and placing third in the business law event at the state leadership conference was an incredible honor that reflected my dedication, knowledge, and hard work. Although I couldn't attend nationals in California due to funding, the experience taught me the importance of perseverance, professionalism, and growth throughout the journey.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Schuler. I was the elected parliamentarian for FBLA twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. As parliamentarian, I learned that parliamentarian procedure provides a structured and orderly way to conduct business. It ensures that decisions are efficient and, and are focused on one point at a time. This also allows all members, this also allows all members to speak equally in their opportunities. And it also allows for decisions to be made fairly through a democratic process. We hope to learn from you today how to conduct our business meetings properly for our monthly organization meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want to appreciate y'all for being here.
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
I was just going to say, um, thank you, mayor, thank you, councilmen, council. We are happy to be here, and we appreciate your support.
And we thank y'all, and we just want to encourage y'all to keep on keeping on. And y'all spoke so well and so clear, and I like that. That is wonderful communication is everything. Thank you. Wish you much success.
We are always happy to see young people.
Yeah.
Because this is where you will start your careers or what have you and look and sit up here with us. So we love having you here. Come anytime.
Okay, Ms., Mr. Hannah wants to say something.
This is, this is, uh, a surprise, a good surprise. Is Mr. FBLA in the house? Okay. For fifty-five years ago, I was Mr. FBLA. Competition with three other schools.
Yeah, it was tough.
But I knew that I wanted to be something else. I didn't know I'd end up being a business person. I was in there to get knowledge and then, uh, having my own business, never working for anyone else. You can do that too. If anything Jerry Hannah can do for you to help you along the way, please free, get your call. Much success to all of you.
I just want to piggyback off of what he said, and again, if there's anything that we can do, um, or I can do personally to assist you all, please do not hesitate to call on us. Um, the high school for health professions is near and dear to my heart as my daughter was the first salutatorian from the high school from health, uh, for health professions. And I received a tour, excellent tour, from, um, Ms. Morgan.
Correct.
Ms. Dunham, Madison.
Madison, I knew it was an M, Ms. Madison. Um, and again, thank you all for coming, come back, and much success with all that you all are doing. And that goes to everyone.
Thank you.
Dr. Kalu would like to say something.
And I'm coming from a different angle. I just want to make an appeal. Uh, nowadays, and with the condition of things in the country, we need health professionals. So I'm asking, and I'm making an appeal for you to study hard and get into the health field. You're not going to regret that. We need a lot of doctors, we need pharmacists, we need nurses, we need other health advocates. Because we need to reach out to our brothers and sisters, our papas and mamas that are sick. We have a lot of sick people, and we need your help. So put your mind into the health area and follow the pathway of health professionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do y'all have any questions for us? Well, thank y'all so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate y'all. Would y'all like to get a picture with us before y'all leave?
Yes, sir.
Are y'all going to stay to the end, or are y'all going to leave early?
We'll stay to the end.
Okay, then let us get a picture. We'll stand up. We'll stand up where we are, and then y'all come up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening. Okay, we have an appearance from Ms. Diana Perkins, Clemson Rural Health, and she's going to give us update on the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Butler, good evening, council. Um, like I said, I'm Diana Perkins. Um, I represent Clemson Rural Health and the Clemson Health Clinic at Orangeburg. Um, we provide health care for rural communities all over the state, but we have a physical location here in Orangeburg, so we really care about this particular community. And like you said, bringing health professionals here. Um, so I had some things prepared, but now I, I feel the need to say we have opportunities to shadow and get some experiences if anybody's interested before y'all head out and leave. Um, so we serve as a hub for primary care, telehealth, remote patient monitoring, business health, and a produce prescription program here in Orangeburg. Um, Clemson University's land grant mission is what empowers us to do this here. Um, and our mission is to transform health outcomes in rural and underserved communities. So today I wanted to share an update on our Manage Together program, which is a life cycle diabetes intervention for women. Um, last time I was here, I was able to get some updates on our one-year anniversary, and so now we have three years under our belt and some really amazing outcomes. Um, so this program brought together expertise of nurse practitioners, registered nurses, community health workers, registered dietitians, and endocrinologists, personal trainers, and it delivered a comprehensive lifestyle intervention. Um, we worked with MUSC Orangeburg as well as our senior community health worker, Sandra Jones. We were able to recruit four hundred and ninety-three women to this program. Um, out of those participants, more than half of them had a statistically significant reduction in A1C and blood pressure. Um, sixty-five percent saw meaningful weight loss. Um, a hundred and fifty participants logged over two thousand workouts at HealthPlex at the MUSC. Um, and we were awarded a one-year extension, um, from Diabetes Free South Carolina, and we are still enrolling for women eighteen to forty. We also just released our two thousand twenty-five Digital Impact Report, and so we do have some statewide, um, highlights, um, from the initiatives and outcomes all over the state. Um, our clinic here in Orangeburg was a, a huge driver of that success, and a lot of the successes that I'm going to say are mostly from here in Orangeburg. So we traveled over forty thousand miles on our mobiles, um, and delivered almost sixteen thousand appointments to about six thousand patients. Um, fifty-seven percent of our, um, almost fifteen hundred hypertensive patients saw their blood pressure decrease an average of nine percent. Uh, we also saw two hundred and twenty-six patients, um, decrease their total cholesterol by an average of fifteen percent through access to primary care and nutritional support, which they would not have had otherwise. These are not just numbers, but real patients who have reduced their health risks while improving their quality of life. Uh, we also provided over four thousand hours of clinical experience to a hundred and thirty-seven college students in hopes of reaching, increasing the number of future providers, um, who choose to serve in rural communities. Um, two students, um, we had some high school students as well, so two of those students actually represented the Orangeburg High School for Health Professions. So we had, we got great feedback, um, from our providers when they worked with those students. Um, and I can see why, seeing them here tonight. Um, so we hope to bring even more opportunities to future health professionals studying right here in Orangeburg in the coming years. So I invite you to visit our website at ClemsonRuralHealth.org as well as schedule a tour of the facility with us, tour our mobiles, see what we're doing. We want you guys to feel like this is a part because we feel that we're a part of your community, um, and we want you guys to feel like you're a part of what we're doing. Um, and so thank you for your time and continued support of our organization. And please reach out if you're interested in shadowing or an internship or anything. Um, we have contact information on the desk for you guys. Awesome, this was perfect timing. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one minute, maybe someone might have some question for, but, uh, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing this much needed information to the city. I think I heard you say forty years is a cutoff period?
Yeah, so we were, um, eighteen and up, and so we had a lot of the majority of the women, the five hundred women that we had were above fifty. And so now we really want to target those, um, uh, childbearing years to help impact maternal, maternal health.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I had to ask that question. I'm a little old, over forty-one. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any more questions?
Thank you for the impact that you're making in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Evans.
Good evening, council. Mayor Butler.
Good evening.
The next item for your consideration is second reading of the ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately point two-one acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at two fifteen Courthouse Square with county tax map number zero one seven three dash one three dash two nine dash zero zero six point zero zero zero. Uh, as I indicated to you all last time, this is a, um, an offer to purchase the green space next to the Williams and Williams Law Firm. Uh, if you can see on your screens, there, there's, they provided a rendering. Uh, what we're referring to is the, uh, the space on your, on the far left that is currently, um, a city-owned property. Uh, the developer is, would like to make a pocket park, a green space, that will have, uh, provide opportunities for the public to use. Uh, there will be, uh, parking for food trucks, there'll be a, a small stage and some permanent seating, uh, at, at the, uh, space. Uh, he's offered to purchase the property for thirty thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or discussions about this item before we read the ordinance? If not, we're going to read the ordinance. Authorize the transfer of approximately zero point two-one acres of real property with the, with improvements, if any, located at twelve fifteen Courthouse Square with county tax map number zero one seven three one three two nine zero zero six zero zero zero, and providing for other matters, other related matters. Be like to entertain motion.
Move that we adopt the ordinance with the correction that the address is two fifteen, um, Courthouse Square.
Second.
Motion has been made, um, by Councilman Grievous, second by Councilman Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As have the motions carried. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. Item number three for your consideration is second reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately one point six acres of real property with improvements, if any, located at three oh seven Jennings Court with county tax map number zero one seven three dash one eight dash one zero dash zero zero three point zero zero zero. Um, as you might recall, this is property that is currently a seldom-used, um, city park that is at the corner of, uh, Jennings and Rose Street, I believe. Um, I think at the last meeting, Councilman Hawkins asked if there was going to be an increase in rent. And just, just for full, uh, for folks who may have not attended last time, uh, the developer is looking to rehab twelve units there and then add, uh, two more units. Um, and I think Councilman Hawkins had asked if there was going to be a, a rent increase. I did speak with the developer, yes, there will be a, a rent increase of ten to fifteen percent that will take place in January, but it is really unrelated to the, the rehab. It was going to, um, be increased regardless. Um, I think Councilwoman Grievous asked how many units, is it going to be two units? Uh, or two buildings with two units per building, so a total of four units. Uh, I think Councilman Hannah asked about parking. Uh, so they, they will provide eight parking spaces for the two, I meant the, the four new units, the two buildings, and then an additional five parking spaces just for current, um, residents. Uh, again, phase one will be the, the construction of the, the two new buildings. Uh, phase two would be the rehab of the twelve units that are currently there. They don't anticipate there being any displacement of current residents, uh, at all that the work can be done, uh, without displacing any residents. Uh, again, we are looking at, the proposal is to sell the property for twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, with visionary clauses that would allow the city to repurchase, uh, the property for twenty-five hundred dollars plus any improvements if the developer does not, uh, do what they basically are saying that they're going to do to the property.
So he said that there's going to be an increase, or the developer said that there's going to be an increase in rent in January. Um, what's the completion date on the project?
So I think it's, uh, eight to twelve. Let me pull up my notes here, I'm going to tell you the wrong thing.
I think it was eight to twelve months.
Yeah, eight to twelve months.
Does he anticipate another increase after the completion of the project?
He, he said that it might go up again, just a, a small increase, another ten percent. May, it might go up because, uh, he said that there hasn't been an increase in, in years. Uh, he said twenty years, and I don't know whether or not that's the case, but that's what I was told. Uh, but again, the, the increase that's going to happen in January was, is not due to the, the rehab. It's just a matter of getting the, the rent to be more comparable. Uh, but it's still well under what market, market rate.
Yeah, they paid three hundred dollars.
Yeah, the, the rent rate, rates now are from three to hundred to four hundred twenty-five dollars.
Not a question, but I am just really pleased to see the area being upgraded.
Yes.
That has been a downfall for us in Orangeburg, and, and we're just happy to see the developer building it up, and I am so, so pleased with that. And if there is an increase, you will expect that kind of thing to happen because everything have a price.
Getting improvements.
So if you want to live really good, then you have to go with the flow. And, and I do appreciate them building up that it has been a disaster for a long time. So I, it, it makes Orangeburg look much better, and I know we all should be pleased with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
I just had a question. Um, let's pull it up on Google Earth here. So the one building is going to be rehabilitated, and then the second building that comes in phase two around the backside of?
So, so phase one would be the construction of the, the two new buildings.
Okay.
And then phase two would be the rehab of the remain, of the, the current buildings.
Okay, on this diagram here, these two buildings, is one of those existing, or the one to the right is the existing?
Uh, I'm sorry, can you modify?
No, 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 it's fine. So this is, uh, I guess this is this building, so these two will go over the basketball courts?
Right.
Okay.
You can't see it, yeah.
Yes, yeah, but the city doesn't own these over here now, just this one? Okay, got you. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more, uh, comments? Uh, I would like to say, um, see, uh, Ms. Evans, that I am so happy to see one of the sons of Orangeburg. And we get this a lot, that who have gone out and done very well and come back and invest in our city.
That's true.
I am so happy to see that because he has done so well in his career, and he's investing in his hometown. That makes me feel good. We should be glad as a council that they are doing that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, no more, uh, question to come, so I'm going to read the ordinance. Authorizing the transfer of approximately zero point one-six acre of real property with improvements, if any, located at three oh seven Jennings Court with the county tax map number zero one seven three one eight ten zero zero three zero zero zero, and providing for the other related matters.
Mayor and council, I move for the adoption of authorizing the transfer of approximately zero point one-six acres of real property and for improvement located at three oh seven Jennings Court.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? As have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, under new business, uh, who's going to give us, okay, the Federal Emergency Management Agency?
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I am here to provide an update on FEMA status as it relates to various projects, uh, in the city. And, uh, before I do that, I wanted to provide, um, just several reminders of things that happened in two thousand twenty-four. So in July of, uh, of two thousand twenty-four, specifically July thirtieth, we had a microburst downtown Orangeburg. Um, Hurricane Debbie hit on August the second, which was a few weeks after that. And then, uh, Hurricane Helene hit September twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-four. Then about a month after that, we were hit with the flood in the gardens, uh, and the police camp areas. So all of those things happened back to back to back. But I think of all of the events that happened last year, the flood was probably the most impactful and caused the most damage. So what was done? Um, we filed insurance claims and FEMA damages. Uh, estimates were also filed after all of those events happened. And of course, um, we had to, or we filed, uh, FEMA claims after, um, the state declared our area was a disaster. Um, the estimated total for all of the FEMA damages, uh, is well over two million dollars. But of that amount, um, to date, we've only received thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, FEMA is typically a reimbursement, which means you have to do the work first, and then you apply to get that money back. Um, even though you have to provide the estimates upfront as far as what the damages, um, may be. So thus far, like I said, we've received from FEMA just over thirty-seven thousand dollars. We've received some insurance claim funds, um, particularly for damage to Hillcrest. We filed a claim of eighteen thousand and after our deductible and a few other, um, items that were taken out, we received, uh, ninety-seven hundred dollars for that, uh, from the insurance, Travelers Insurance. We also received just over thirty-four hundred dollars, um, due to the loss of rent from the damage that was done to the chamber building. Um, we still have an outstanding claim for Mermel Field for lighting damage that was done for, uh, Hurricane Helene. So the, um, the ninety-seven hundred dollars that we received, um, of course, that was minus our deductible of five thousand, and we have, um, filed that claim with FEMA to try to get that five thousand dollars back. The impact, um, to all of this, like I said, the greatest damage, um, was, was from the flood and it was to the gardens and to the police camp road. When I say the gardens, that includes the chapel building, um, the chamber building, uh, the boardwalk and police camp. As far as the, the chamber is concerned, it is covered by flood insurance, but the cost of the repair, which was estimated at about three hundred thousand, will not exceed the deductible of six hundred thousand. And that six hundred thousand includes the National Flood Insurance of five hundred thousand, that carries a five hundred thousand dollar deductible. Then you also have a hundred thousand dollar deductible from Travelers, so that makes up the six hundred thousand. The chapel is not covered by flood insurance. The cost of repair for that is about fifty-eight thousand and it is currently being worked on. We had to pay ten thousand dollars for an assessment to the boardwalk. That's for an engineer to come in and just take a look at the boardwalk and figure out, you know, the cost of repairs. So we had to pay for that upfront, which has been done. So that cost, like I said, was ten thousand for them to do that assessment. And then, um, the assessment showed that there is at least a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars worth of repair that is needed for the boardwalk. And that is due to the need for heavy equipment to be brought in, um, to do the repairs to the bro- boardwalk. Regarding the spray park, if you recall, the spray park closed in twenty twenty-three due to mechanical issues, which we repaired and addressed in time for the park to reopen during the summer of twenty twenty-four. Shortly after, uh, twenty twenty-four, that summer ended, the events that I initially mentioned started happening. But it was the flood of November that closed the park for a second time. And of course, it remained closed for the summer, this past summer. The total cost of repair for the spray park in twenty twenty-three was thirty-three thousand, largely funded by a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, uh, that we received with the remaining subsidized by the city. The estimated, uh, repair cost to the spray park from the twenty twenty-four flood is between forty-one to fifty-nine thousand dollars. And that's based on an estimate that we received back in February of this year. So with inflation, I'm sure that that cost has gone up. The full cost, however, in addition to, um, the inflation is probably going to increase because of just some testing that needed to be done on, uh, additional equipment at the, at the spray park. So that damage, uh, estimate could exceed fifty-nine thousand dollars. The splash pad is not covered, uh, under any kind of, of flood insurance. So a FEMA claim has been filed with them. And we anticipate at this point that the park will reopen in time for the summer of twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Do you have any questions for Ms. Williams from any of the council members? If you do, raise your hand and be acknowledged.
I have, um, a couple. The chapel, is it still being currently used?
No, it is not.
So we're fixing it?
We're fixing it, yes.
Even though it's not being used?
Yes, it, well, when I say it's not being used currently, it, it has been used in the past, but it's, it's, it's not being used currently because of the repairs that's needed.
Okay. And, um, you said FEMA is like, you know, a lot of reimbursement. Is that usually, I mean, I know it's probably not a hundred percent of the time, but is there a rough estimate of, you know, if, if we put up fifty thousand dollars to fix the spray park, what is the chances that FEMA would reimburse? I mean, I, it's probably hard to say, I've kind of put you on the spot.
It, it really kind of is simply because, of course, you have the government shutdown that's right now, that's happening right now. And, um, it's been a very slow and arduous process with FEMA. We're talking monthly meetings with them just to get it to this point. And of course, with the government being shut down, it's kind of hard to say when we would be able to get that, that claim filed and be reimbursed.
But the plan as of now is to try to have it ready by summer of twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You stated that it, price within, may have gone up because of inflation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now that's true in some instances. But we getting bids on this, is this one person that can do this?
So we have, we received bids on all of the projects, that was a, a FEMA requirement. We received bids when we started this process, um, with them in December, all the way through this past summer. So the bid that we received, um, for the spray park was something that was done back in February of this year. So the costs, I'm sure, at this point have, have increased.
We don't have to go back and do them.
We, we probably will, um, but right now, uh, what has been submitted to FEMA was those costs back then.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at the numbers you presented, even though we received about thirty-seven thousand from FEMA, we are, uh, looking at two point five to three million.
Yes, sir.
In terms of, uh, the money from our pocket to, you know, fix up all those areas, do we have that money?
To answer that question, I would say no, we don't, don't have all of that to, to fix it. We do have some funds, um, some capital project sales tax funds that were, uh, designated for, uh, improvements to the gardens that we could utilize. We've been very, um, very strategic about not spending the money until we've had, gotten through the, the budget process, uh, which is why we've had the delay. But as we continue to get into this fiscal year and see how things are going, then we will likely tap into those, the capital project sales tax funds to begin some of these repairs.
Okay. That chapel building, after the repair, do we have any future use for the building or what?
Not to my, not to my knowledge, I, do you, I don't know the history of the, the chapel.
The mayor members of council, the chapel is currently used as a rental space. Uh, we do periodically have rentals of weddings that take place in the chapel, uh, because of its historic, uh, nature. So people do come and rent it to conduct weddings. That's primarily the use that we've been using it over the last years.
Okay.
You have any more questions? Thank you. Any, any of y'all, you got any more questions, Jordan?
No, just more of a statement, I think, you know, I know that it's a lot of money, but I think, you know, it's imperative that we get this stuff fixed with, you know, this being the Garden City and, you know, down at the boardwalks for the, you know, Rose Festival, be here before we know it. And I think it's imperative that we do get this stuff fixed. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but I think it's something we definitely have to come together and figure out. And the spray park, I think a lot of kids play at that spray po- that spray park every year.
Yeah, we realize that, that's a, a tremendous impact to the community, which is why we want to make that a priority to try to get that fixed by, by next year.
And with all of this going on now, you don't know when you're gonna be able to look at some grants or what, you know, to help with all of this. So I guess we just have to hope.
Do the best we can.
That it works out.
Well, we continue to, to work and look, look for funding sources.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. DPU?
This is Mayor Williams, Council, we have no business at this point.
Is it, thank you. Uh, we have our executive session, discussion of negotiated incidents to propose contractual arrangements and/or the receipt of legal advice, where legal advice relates to pending threatening and potential claims of other matters covered by the attorney-client privileged settlement, legal claims, or the position of the public agency in which the adversary situation involves the assertion against the agency of a claim. South Carolina Code, Section thirty dash four, dash seventy, A, two. Health insurance, um, town of Norway, long-term installments repayment agreement, waiver, fees, transfer of surplus property. So we would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. For clarifications, transfer surplus property, we have surplus property?
No, we can't. We have to wait till we go into executive. Okay, um, would you, uh, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
It's probably moved by Councilman Hannah.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor? I have motions, can thank all of you for coming. And if you would like to wait till, we will be returning back to open session. If you want to wait, you can, if not, we're gonna say goodnight. If you want to wait, you can. If not, we're going to say goodnight.
We would like to entertain the motion to go back into open session.
Some of.
It's properly moved by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kit, all in favor?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your patience. You have before you item number six that requests to authorize the DPU manager to waive fees related to wholesale water contract for the town of Norway.
Okay, we would like to entertain the motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we do not authorize the DPU manager to waive the fees and related to the wholesale water contract for the town of Norway.
A motion has been made by Councilman Hawkins.
Seconded motion.
And motion has been made and seconded by Councilman Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it, the motion is carried.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, item number seven, authorize the DPU manager to transfer surplus property to the town of Norway. We have some surplus meters that the town of Norway could make use of and they are requesting that we give those meters to them so that they might deploy in their, on their water system. I would recommend us moving forward to transfer at least 500 of those meters to the town of Norway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley, we would like to entertain the motion.
Mayor and council, I authorize DPU manager to transfer surplus property to the town of Norway with 500 meters.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilman Kit, seconded by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
We would like to entertain the motion at this time to adjourn.
Move for adjournment.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have it, the motion is carried. Good night to everyone, good night to those you in social media.